I think, Mike, with your permission, I think we could have Lisa take a roll call right now, and that would at least get us started underway, if that's okay with you. Is that okay?
That would be great.
All right, at this time then, 7:07, we are starting the meeting.
Lisa knows what she's doing.
I do. Okay, Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg is not here yet. Jim? No. Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I am here. Mike?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Pete? Peter?
Here.
He's here.
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
All right, we are all here except for our chairman.
All right, Mr. Sinatra, at this time, if you want to open up the floor for any public comments on the agenda item?
Please do. Would anybody from the public like to make a comment?
Not one of those Kims want to make a comment?
The chorus line is quiet. All right, hearing no comments, move on. I think we could, can we skip to the superintendent's report? In hopes that the chairman might show?
If you would entertain me and allow me to do that.
Sure.
At this time, as long as there are no objections from the rest of the board. All right, hearing none, I think I'm going to move on to my, I'm going to skip over and go right to my personnel updates because I think we have some people who are interested in hearing some of the changes that we have going on in Region 12. So I'd like to congratulate our first appointment of Allison Montague. She is the new barn manager for Chapag Valley School, so we welcomed her as part of our return from the break. Her expertise in horses is outstanding. She has immediately gotten onto our horses and is having one riding toe and really has just done a phenomenal job of working with our team and getting acclimated. And we do have some people who are exiting, so we do say goodbye to Megan Thimble, who was our barn manager. We wish her luck in her next endeavors. Michelle Sagerson, who is our remedial tutor at Burnham School. We will miss Michelle, and you know, we know that our paths will cross again. We do have an upcoming leave of absence. Stephanie Shook, our science teacher, from April 1st to June. And I have to announce a retirement. Kim Gallo, principal of Chapag Valley School, effective June 30th. And it's with mixed emotions that I share the news of Kim Gallo's retirement from her position at Chapag Valley School Principal, effective June 30th, 2021. I am happy for Kim and the time she will have with her children and grandchildren, but I'm sad for Chapag. For those who know Kim, you know this decision is one that she wrestled with. She believes in service and civic responsibility. She has done both admirably during her tenure at Chapag. I am not going to give her goodbye speech tonight because I know there are many actions that will be taken from this moment up until the moment she leaves office on June 30th. But knowing Kim, she plays a trifle of glory in her final leg of her journey into retirement. I do not expect her delicate flower to wilt. I know her leadership will be strong in the spring and beyond. So tonight, as I make this announcement, I will just share from Kim's own transcript. When she was asked how she would lead Chapag as the first female principal, her response was, "I don't know how to lead any other way." And the same thing, when asking Kim if she will continue with the same veracity and commitment to Chapag in the days leading up to her retirement, Kim does not know any other way to lead. I am looking forward to her strong finish to this outstanding career. And I think I'm going to open up everybody's mic because I think we need to give a round of applause to Kim Gallo.
Does the board have to approve this?
I don't think we will.
Definitely not.
Thank you.
Hello, Gallo family.
Thank you.
Miss you.
Oh, there's, oh, hi sweetheart. I'm sorry, that's my granddaughter. Oh yeah, my son and daughter-in-law too. Hi Lucy.
We're very proud of Grandma. I hope you are too. Oh my goodness.
Thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it. I'm a very, very lucky person.
So.
Congrats, Mom.
Thanks sweetheart.
Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations.
Grammy loves you.
Abby's gonna be shy.
Yep.
Kim, that's the best.
As you scroll through, as you scroll through the screens, this is Michael Boucher's handiwork. Everybody was on board, but I think you also know the amount of people who came out and there was no arm twisting. They just wanted to say.
Really just gave me up like that?
Yep.
There was arm twisting.
All right. So at this time, and I do see Greg has now returned. So Greg, we have skipped forward. We're now going back to the actual agenda. So we landed with public consent, and if you would like for the consent of the minutes for the board meeting on December 7th.
You're muted, Greg.
That's hilarious, just wanted to say, and I'm gonna go.
Do I have a motion to adopt those minutes? I'm sorry about that, but I've had trouble signing in tonight. I don't know what the problem is.
I make a motion, well, no, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We don't need a motion. All we need is an objection. If no one has an objection, the consent agenda is accepted.
All right. So Greg, I just forwarded you the agenda. I know that there are some computer problems. So at this time, do you want Ben to share the video of the year review, and that'll give some?
Yes, please. Please do it.
Okay, so at this time, Ben has created a slideshow from the first half of the year to remember everything that we have been going through, and so it's a look back on the end of 2020. So Ben, if you would like to share the video, please. Another wonderful job by Ben, and I think, you know, even with the somber music, I think you know outstanding things have happened. We may be masked, maybe a little bit distant from each other, but it is a great year. All right. We're having a little bit of technical difficulty. If everyone will just give us one moment to make certain we have the information so we can move forward smoothly.
COVID-19?
Yep. Greg, would you like me to give my update on COVID-19?
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, I'd just like to share, last time we had talked about the updates and our figures from up to that date. And again, I want to make certain that we're continuing to watch what are some of the rolling figures and what is happening in Region 12. I know that often people hear fears and rumors, and so again, to make certain that we really quantify how COVID is affecting Region 12 at this time. So as for our total two-date numbers that we have, these do not include the COVID-positive case that we received today or the additional quarantine. So this was up to yesterday. But as you can see, we have had, in total, we have had five staff members in Region 12 who have had COVID. We have had 10 students. As you can see, we have a large number who have been quarantined due to close contact, both students and staff. Again, we take these measures to make certain that we clear the edges and try to reduce any spread. So again, as part of our mitigation strategy, anybody who during the school day fell within six feet for more than 15 minutes of somebody who is COVID-positive is put into quarantine. We do continue to have the 14-day quarantine because that is considered best practice per the CDC and DPH. There have been some reductions in that that have been taken up by other districts. Whereas you can do a seven-to-10-day quarantine. However, the reason that they provide these opportunities and when the CDC released the information and reduced some of these quarantines, it was to reduce a perceived burden. And I think that right now, the burden of COVID really outweighs some of, you know, reducing some of that quarantine time. We have seen a number of people who have let us know that within their house, they have cleared the 10 days and something has happened with a symptom on the 11th, 12th, 13th day. So we have seen where that 14 days of quarantine really does play itself out in the cycle of the illness, so we do continue that practice. So last week, and we do send out this email to our community. And by community, I mean school community specifically, where each week they receive our COVID numbers. The reason we're doing that is because we continue to provide that option where families can self-choose to go into distance learning. And in order to help make that decision, I think it is important that they see what are the true numbers within our schools. As you can see from last week, that anybody who did have a COVID inter, had some kind of connection with COVID, did not return to our schools last week. And so we really do appreciate the steps that people are taking when they know that they have a known contact, alerting the schools and transitioning to a distance learning or quarantine situation. The questions that have come up regarding the actual cost of substitutes and what that does within our schools is that we've taken some untraditional methods, measures in order to make certain that we can stay open. I don't want there to be a any confusion that, you know, we're easily able to keep the doors open because we are impacted often. And you saw that we have had staff members that have had to quarantine during this time. We have staff members who, when their children's schools have closed, they've had to stay home for childcare reasons. And so in covering these classes, we've been able to do some of this coverage with our staff, in which we pay our staff additional to cover the classrooms during the prep periods. It is a voluntary situation, but it is one in which I have to tell you, it has kept us safer because we're not always bringing in outside substitutes who may have been in other districts. And additionally, it's also really helped create some classroom control and consistency at Chapag. Other things we have had is when a teacher is quarantined but may be able to teach. On some occasions, we have had the conversations on whether or not they are able to teach remotely, and we have a tutor, a para-interventionist, cover that classroom during that time. So we really are trying to create some stability for our students, so there's truly a sense of control within the classrooms. When we actually calculate what does COVID cost our district? When we're just talking about substitute costs, if I take a look at what it costs for the teachers who have to remain home, that we've covered for costs because they are entitled to their salaries for a portion of it. The sub-costs and for teacher coverages, thus far, for substitute coverage, it has cost the district $89,051. To me, I will tell you right now, it is a small price to pay to keep our children in school. But it is one in which I think it is important that we recognize what is happening and the great measures that are being taken to keep our doors open. In addition to wanting to keep our doors open, the conversation about vaccines is also happening right now in the background. We have surveyed our staff to see who would want to be availed the vaccine. And we have actually found that right now, 82% of our staff members have said yes, they are committed. We have some who are uncertain. We have some who have said no. Some who did say no were because they were able to get vaccinations other places and did not feel that they wanted to do it through the school. But we are working with the Newtown and New Milford Departments of Health to coordinate the COVID vaccinations. And right now, our school nurses are qualified under the 1A section in order to be vaccinated. So the next level is the 1B, in which school personnel will have access. They have asked us to prioritize school personnel as far as who can receive access if there's limited supplies. At some point, we want to get everybody vaccinated, but if there comes to a, you know, we have 35 yeses and there's only 25 vaccines, we want to get the vaccines faster to those who may have close contact with students. So we certainly would take a look, not just at, you know, where they're teaching. We'd look at what are the responsibilities of the job and other health conditions when making these decisions. So I am working closely with Sandy DeBella and making certain that we are creating a controlled and systematic way to avail the vaccines as they become available to the staff. So that's COVID updates, but I will certainly open up to any questions people may have.
I have a question. You showed 97 are quarantining. How many have chosen to do remote learning, i.e. how many kids are in the school?
Well, and when I say 97, that is cumulative between August and, and on Sunday, I think was the number. So our biggest number that we had out was when we had out 61 sixth graders because we had to quarantine a grade level. So when you look at it, it's pretty sporadic. What we typically see is that as far as close contacts, when one student or staff member is COVID-positive, I think typically we see between three to five people who are then put on our mandatory quarantine. But as far as people making that choice, we did see a rise in those who are choosing to distance learn between Thanksgiving and a lot of them are saying they're going to return on January 19th. So I think right now, I say we are probably around 130 students district-wide who are currently on remote. And that is by choice, not by quarantine.
Thank you.
Anything else? We'll move on to reports and recognition. The only thing I can say is, is that I continue to be impressed with the fact that here we are, following the Thanksgiving break, following the Christmas break, and we are open for in-person learning since August 31st. It is truly an amazing performance by our superintendent and our staff to have our schools open this long when many other schools have had to close and go to distance learning. And Kim, I can see a smile on your face because I know that this was damn difficult, and you've pulled it off, all of you. Thank you very much. We'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, again, and I think I'm just gonna echo, thank you to our community, our staff members and our students. You know, hearing what Greg is saying, how long we've been open, it is truly because of the people who we serve and the commitment to those who are serving our students that we are able to keep these doors open. We are an anomaly, and I couldn't be more proud of being part of this anomaly, and it really goes to show that people do care and are looking out for one another. So speaking of some good news that we get to share, I want to congratulate our girls soccer team, who was recognized for good sportsmanship by the C I A C. I think of any time where we want to know good character is happening, it's wonderful that it is happening now and it's being recognized. So congratulations to Tara Flaherty and the soccer team. I want to congratulate our Chapag seniors, Haley Lasky and Brooke Mercier, for being selected to the 2020 All-State Field Hockey Team. So even under restrictions, our students are doing amazing things. I want to thank Ms. Heather Hurley. Because of her efforts, the Leo Club has been given a $500 donation from the Lions Club to help us get up and running. They've had a few Zoom meetings already, which included the Lions Club members. But at this time, the students are also invited to attend their meetings after the new year. So again, promoting the civic responsibility all around. Additionally, in the, in the ability for us to receive some funding from the community, our agri-science program is incredibly grateful to the D-Bolt Foundation for the $20,000 donation to our program. We are excited about the donation to enhance our fledgling program. And I believe right now, that, Kim, the team is exploring an electric skid steer with the money to purchase. Everything that we continue to do in this program, we are pushing environmentally friendly choices as we progress farming and next-generation agri-science. Kim, am I correct in that?
You're absolutely correct, and we're getting very, very close to having that occur and be on our campus.
Fantastic, thank you. During the holiday season, we did have pajamas worn again this year as our students continued to support the PJs Day for Connecticut Children's Medical Hospital. And as they held the posters and let everybody know that cancer hasn't stopped for COVID. So to know that our students continue to look out for others is just another civic responsibility that is done well. And Chapag Valley School will be reverting their 54 grading system that was utilized in the spring of 2020. We recognize that the traditional grading system allowing the zeros can be a powerful threat that impedes learning. So right now, what Chapag is trying to do is not have the threat of a zero be the consequence of not doing the work, but getting the kids to do the work. They are going to be presenting the shift to our families and to students in the near future. And as that rollout is happening, the Chapag team will present to the board. So I just wanted to lay the foundation for what you're gonna find out in the February board meeting. Additionally, things that are foreshadowing, the Prada report was placed in your packet this month. We were originally going to have Peter Prada join us. He is currently traveling. And he will be able to present at the February board meeting. However, I felt it was important that we got the numbers out there. These numbers are incredibly volatile. We've always talked about the fact that our COVID numbers, especially here in Region 12, create some huge fluctuations and what we need to do in the future. Whether or not we have our New Yorkers take root and we have to plan for larger classes or more class sizes, more classes with smaller class sizes, we're gonna have to make those decisions. And so we've asked Peter himself to talk about his methodologies and his predictions. So I figured it's a good time for you to have the information in advance, to get the information to the public. So if there are any questions, it'll help us as we go through our budgeting process in March. And again, I need to thank the board and this community for supporting our return to schools after vacation. Again, our doors can stay open as long as people continue to act responsibly. And this investment in mitigation is really our investment in education, and I couldn't be more proud. So thank you all, and thank you board members for supporting this. We already went through the personnel. I don't think we need to rehear the speech again unless Kim's ego needs it. So at this time, I will turn it over to Greg.
Okay. I think the next thing on this agenda, if I'm reading it correctly, and I'm telling you I've had many technical difficulties today, is the treasures report. John?
Yes, good evening. The 2019-2020 Region 12 Financial Audit is currently underway. Surprisingly, Mr. Charles Heaven is not the lead auditor this year, which is definitely a break from tradition. Charles personally conducted the audit for many, many years. However, Erica Meloagno, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, the daughter of Charles Heaven and Company Partner Enrico Meloagno, is conducting the audit with the assistance and support of Nicole Grant and the business office staff. The completion is expected by the end of the month. Additionally, it should come to no surprise the the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget planning and process is in full swing. Each administrator and department are currently forwarding their proposals and requests. Both the employee salaries and insurance renewal premiums are being calculated and finalized. It should be noted, and Megan touched on a lot of it, that some of the, there are some atypical costs related to COVID. So and I don't know how anybody could predict what the expenses are going to be in the future, but I'm sure something will be built in, some kind of a relief valve. Some of the key dates in the near future, on January twenty-fifth, a draft, a rough draft of the budget will be presented to the F and O committee. So the other board members may want to, or the public, whoever, should try to tune into that Zoom meeting. And February second, there's going to be an open meeting for finance committee and town finance members between four and six P M. So the topic for that meeting is elementary schools, special education, reach and facilities. Then on February fourth, a follow-up meeting for the finance committee, town finance members from four to six. So on on plan for that is discussion about Chippewa Valley School, agri-science, professional development and technology. And it's a great opportunity for everyone to partake. Who everyone involved, all the stakeholders. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. We're gonna move on to committee reports. The first one is Cabe. Mary, anything new with Cabe?
Not too much is new. There are webinars, a webinar starting tomorrow from noon to one fifteen. The one tomorrow is on promoting civility around the board table. And on Thursday from twelve to one fifteen, there is another one called Relationships Matter. I'm happy to say I don't think civility is not something that we have to talk about because we seem to be very civil. So I really like that. So I don't, but that's about it for Cabe.
Thank you. Mike, curriculum educational program?
Sure. So we spent the majority of our time talking about some of the grading changes that Superintendent Bennett already gave you a quick preview of and more to come about that at our February meeting. We also spoke about some of the new course offerings, some of which are are gonna be dramatically new, some of which might be tweaks such as more E C E opportunities for students. And again, more information will be forthcoming as as we start to move forward on some of those changes.
Okay. Alex, finance and operations?
Yeah, our last meeting was just an hour before our last board meeting. So we have not met since our last board meeting, so I really have nothing to report.
Okay. Jim, labor negotiations?
I don't think Jim is here.
You are right. I do not see him. Okay, well, I know that there are no pending contracts for negotiation, so I think we're good there. Julie, long-range planning?
Hi, I hope everyone can hear me because I keep getting notices that my internet connection is unstable. So just a couple of quick updates. We are set to launch our marketing brochure in the spring, and we did just today receive some new logos for our committee to look at. And our initial review of them is we really like several of them. So I'm really hopeful that along with the brochure, we'll have a logo to send out as well. And as far as our long-range planning goals, we have received several proposals from different groups to help us with that. And at our meeting on February first, we'll be reviewing those proposals and coming up with what we think is an appropriate budget and sharing that with the rest of the board. That's it.
Outstanding, Julie. The idea that you're getting closer to a logo is a big I know you've been unhappy with the efforts to date, so this is good news. Okay, we'll move on to new business. The first item is agri-science update. Welcome to Bethel Public Schools. Oh, I'm excited about this. Megan?
What can I say? Congratulations, Region Twelve. We have invited our seventh town to to join us that is not part of our Region Twelve. And it is with great pride that we welcome Bethel students starting this fall. I also want to give a great thank you to the Chippewa team that pivoted from presenting to their Board of Education on December seventeenth, having their final board approval to making certain that their children's applications were in our hand by Friday and making certain tours are happening. So all stops were pulled out, red carpets have been laid before. But I will tell you, we are quite proud. And one of the statements that was made by Bethel that they were impressed with was twenty-first vision of agri-science that is provided here at Chippewa. And I think this is something that this board worked very hard for. It is very easy when they come to you because everything has been laid and the foundation and what has been worked for has really paid off. Bethel's statement was in the past, they did not want to come because they didn't know what this program was gonna be, which means that we needed to prove ourselves in order to have them join us. And we have proven ourselves. So I have to say congratulations to the Chippewa Agri-science team. Congratulations to this Board of Education. We are immensely proud. And so with that, I think it is also very important that we share what our agri-science applications look like. And I can tell you, and I had to tell Sue Haverly that I would say this. She has more than this on her desk right now. So I said to her, I said, but I only want to present what we got up until Friday. But we do have more applications that are now in hand. But as you can see, this year, we had three Sherman students apply, seven Newtown, twenty new Milford students, five new Fairfield, eleven Danbury, three Brookfield, twenty-one Region Twelve students, three Bethel students and one from another district. That said, when I look at how we are doing and if we are increasing, last year at this time, we had only had one Sherman applicant. We actually had to go and see what happened and why we have the applicants. We had five Newtowns, so we are seeing an increase in Newtown. New Milford averaged, I believe, we had sixteen last year, so we're seeing an increase in applications. Last year, New Fairfield, we had one applicant. DMV were down a bit. We had fifteen last year. Now we are at eleven. Brookfield, we had five last year. We have three this year. Region Twelve continues to be our strongest. So I think that speaks very highly to the fact that our students are seeing this program in practice and want to be part of it. Bethel, well, when we had no one last year, we're really excited to have the three. And again, what I did on the others for the ninth, tenth and eleventh, those are the children who are currently in our hallways. So you can see right now, we have five Sherman students in our hallways. Depending on what we accept for next year, we could have up to eight. So tracking it, it's looking like a very promising year for agri-science. And again, kudos to the efforts of recruitment during a pandemic. And I think that really speaks to the energy that was brought. I can tell you, you know, this was new. Last year's recruiting was done by Lori Travato, and she did an outstanding job. So to know that the team just picked up and never missed a beat is again a credit to really how things are flowing in the agri-science program. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the efforts of Sue Haverly, who has become the new best friend of every agri-science parent who has a question, who needs follow-up, and really has has done her own recruiting. So thank you very much, Sue.
Are we gonna have to take all the students or do we have more than we can take?
We actually, what happens is there are some caps with it, so we do not just accept. What happens now from this point is that the agri-science team goes through the screening process in which the applicants, we review their grades, we review their testing results. They have to have letters of recommendation. They have to write their own letter of intent. Think about this as an eighth grader doing all of these things. We also, they also have to get interviewed in order to be in this program. So from there, we take a look, we see what is allowed from each district. And at that point, we put students who are accepted, we create a waitlist, and we go through our rolling admission that way. Any other questions regarding our agri-science enrollments? Questions about having Bethel join or?
Are there any other towns that we're soliciting now?
We don't, we don't particularly poach. So right now.
Why not?
Well, I'll tell you why not, Alex, because we have seven terrific sending towns here. These are spectacular places. If you have not spent a lot of time there, you should. We are very fortunate to have kids from these towns joining our kids in our program. This is a really tremendous thing, and we don't need to poach. We've got some great, some great opportunities here. And I I really hope that in the future, we'll have even more parents decide that their kids will benefit from a Chippewa education in the in the agri-science program. We we just continue to do better, and the fact that Bethel joined this is really important. I think that's that's exciting. So there we go. Seven great sending towns, so we're now to ten towns total. And and we're gonna really make this, it's gonna be a great program because of the kids that are coming from our towns of these others. Okay?
Mary has something.
I'm sorry, Mary.
I just wanted to tell you, I brought my granddaughter up and my son, who went to Chippewa, up to to visit the animals. And I think my granddaughter is ready to go to high high school now. My son was like, I'm so impressed with the whole thing. He's like, wow, this looks like a really different place than where I went to school. But he and his wife and my granddaughter were were bowled off by the whole thing. So I was happy to feel that.
How old's your granddaughter?
She is six.
We'll save a place for her.
That's terrific. Okay. I think we're on to moving to the building diversity, tolerance and inclusion section.
Oh, my goodness. So I I have to say, as as you know, board members, we have taken this topic at every agenda this year. And I couldn't be more grateful that the efforts that our building administrators have taken in order to make certain they are promoting unity and tolerance and understanding. We have, just to share one example that had happened, Chippewa had taken on a perspectives video. And they had had a video where students all watched where a a Muslim student was new to a school. And it told the story from the different perspectives. And who, you know, the the Muslim child who is trying to assimilate into a culture and coming up against some cultural resistance and some interactions that may have seemed benign, but truly take on a a much more callous implication when you see other things happening around it. And the students were asked to explore. And this was designed by the school counselors in the Chippewa administration and done during an advisory. And it was actually, a lot of the discussions were led by the students themselves. And so they hit pause in the video and they would talk about what they're seeing, who they think is at fault, trying to place blame, figuring out, you know, root cause and what's going on. And then as the video continues, you see how they've managed to work it out. And sometimes some of the solutions that students may have offered actually may have created impediments to creating some of these relationships. And so recognizing some of the cultural differences, recognizing racial differences, and having these conversations in a safe way where you take a perspective and when you're watching it in third person, it allows that exchange to happen. And so, you know, to know that they're keeping the conversation going, knowing the wounded warrior project in which what does it mean to be a veteran? And to recognize that, you know, it's not that every person who serves in the Army is is white and has, you know, grown up here in the United States. And to recognize what does that service mean and to gain respect for what is citizenship. Know that that is being something that is, again, at every advisory, we continue the conversation. We want to make certain that this is done in a safe way. And we want them, we want our students to know that this is not something that is part of a curriculum. This is part of humanity. And so even with our youngest students, where the when we're celebrating cultures and you look at holidays around the world and recognizing that there are games that are played and to have our students embrace other cultures and to show respect by understanding, having Unity Day, finding days where we make certain that everybody's included. And our lunchrooms look a lot different now, and it's hard to make everybody feel together. Yet the practices that are are even in our elementary schools are doing to make certain that our students feel welcome, feel safe and feeling included. And I think now more than ever, that is very important. Because I do have to say that what happened at the Capitol on Wednesday was something that needed to be talked about in our classrooms. I can tell you that we did not introduce the information to the students. At the elementary level, we handled it with based on if students had feelings. The administrators made certain that our teachers knew how to listen, how to direct them to appropriate resources and how to ask the question, how did that make you feel? Because I think we really need to address it based on what they experienced in their emotions. At the middle high school level, the decision was made that they would address this through social studies and making certain that the humanities had the opportunity to have the conversation about what this, what government is, what has happened, exploring the actual documents of the Constitution. And at this time, I'm actually gonna ask if Kim or Mike Croft want to share anything about that because I think it is powerful enough that the first-hand account will mean so much more. Kim?
Sure. This is one of those moments that the baseball player wants to get the ball, and our teachers wanted to get the ball that day. We started our conversations the very night of of what was happening. And we started talking about what we, what it would look like in school and how we could make sure that our students who had a different opinion than many of us do were included and welcomed because we always have to remember that students are in school by law and their opinions have to be respected because they're in a place where they have to be. So we met in the morning, we we talked the night before, and then we met in the morning and we talked about our messaging from the initial announcement that I made to the messages that we sent to our teachers, to the messages that we sent to our students. And that's all going to culminate in an advisory on Thursday where students who wish to discuss this issue will come to this. where students who wish to discuss this issue will come to this, and they'll talk about it as we do in all of our social studies classes. If you have an opinion, it doesn't matter what your opinion is. Do you have evidence? Can you cite sources? Can you talk about how you came to this decision? And that's how the discussion will go. If Mike Croft is here, I'd be happy to have him elaborate on what I'm saying. I don't think he is, though. Sorry.
No, I think he was here for your announcement, and I think he was here for the most important part of the night.
Thank you. I was really, really proud, as I am many, many times, to be principal of Chapag on this day because our teachers wanted to get the ball. They wanted to have the difficult conversations, and they wanted to make sure and turn that back to, how do you feel? Where did you get your information? And where did it come from? Where will you go with your opinion moving forward? Which is a lifelong learning.
Mary has her hand up, Greg?
Yes, I can't see everyone. Okay, Mary? Sorry about that.
Kim, I wanted to tell you something about that. As the whole events were unfolding on Wednesday, Johanna Hayes actually did a live video on Facebook from...
I can't hear you, Mary. I'm sorry.
Mary, you've gone silent on us.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I think you've gone, I think you've gone...
Another good, I'm back?
No, you're good. No, you're good.
Yeah, you're back now. The last thing we heard was you mentioned John and Hayes, and that was the end of it.
Okay, Johanna spoke from her office on Facebook Live as it was unfolding. And she was noticeably shaken, but and for somebody who was teacher of the, National Teacher of the Year, she said, and a social studies teacher, she said, I don't know how I would teach this. I don't know how I would present this. And I'm glad to see that our teachers were able to take the ball and run with it. That's great. Thank you.
It was a very good day to be a teacher because history was unfolding in front of your eyes. And don't get me wrong, it wasn't a good day. But from a teaching perspective, you got to teach history in the moment. It was really something to see. And our teachers are more than well-equipped to do that in a fair and balanced way.
I liked it.
Okay. All right, what's next?
Well, that concludes our update on some building diversity and understanding and inclusion.
Winter sports.
Yep. So on January 14th, the CIAAC will make their final decision about whether or not we can have a winter season. In their opinion, the best-case scenario is that on January 19th, practices can start. There are a number of sports that will not be allowed to play just yet. They're going to postpone cheerleading. They're going to postpone indoor track, just because a lot of those meets have more people. So really, the question is whether or not basketball and swimming will continue for Chapag. For us, again, it's not just what the CIAAC is going to say to us. We're evaluating a lot of factors, including what are the health conditions of the teams around us. Additionally, there's new factors and things that we need to consider. Any child who has had COVID in the past would have to get medical clearance, including in EKG is what they're recommending to make certain that their heart is okay because we know that there are some lingering effects from COVID. And so we really want to make certain that if a student is going to play, it is really with the safest conditions. We recognize that there's going to be mask-wearing and some other restrictions that will be. And there probably won't be live audience. However, we're certainly equipped to make certain we can livestream. But again, right, we're sitting down as we are getting the preliminary information. There's a decision that's made at the state level, and then there's the decision that we're going to make at the local level. And please know, our decision at the local level is going to be made with the information we have available to us. And just because we have a competition schedule does not mean we go forward with it if it means that there is any kind of danger in that interaction. So we're also watching for, is the other school currently open? What are the health conditions of the other town? And as we're planning out the schedule? So there's the ideal schedule that would go forward, but then there's also the case-by-case that we would make. Again, we recognize there's a lot of factors at play right now. So what I can say to you is we're waiting for the first domino to fall before we move forward with, before we can say and commit to actually having our winter season. If indeed the winter season does occur, it would be from January 9th to March 2nd. So typically, the winter season is 12.5 weeks. It would be reduced to 6.5 weeks. Part of that is because they are also trying to make a huge push to have football happen in the spring. So they're looking to create this window for an abbreviated sports season. I have never been so happy not to have football in a town because I will tell you, those decisions are heated, and I do not envy any of my colleagues who are fighting that tide. But again, everything that we've made our decisions on are based on safety, and we will continue to do that. And I have to say, I applaud Matt Parachi and the coaches for fully endorsing and supporting that safe practice. So that is our update for sports.
Wow. Thank you. Well, we're going to move on to action items. The first action item is, well, the, actually, only action item is to consider and, if appropriate, approve Region 12 schools voluntary continuation of the Families First Corona Response Act. Leave $64,111 spent from September through January. These funds were able to be covered through grants and salary savings. So Megan, I'm going to leave this one to you to explain what you want us to do.
Okay. Well, thank you for greasing the runway for that. As Greg said, what I'm hoping that the board would approve today is the Family First Corona Act. Actually, the mandated federal guidelines ended on December 31st. And what they did is they're allowing employers to volunteer to do this, this essentially credit towards the employees until, I believe it is, March 31st. The goal is to support our families and keep them whole because our employees, as they're trying to figure out childcare and things that have happened because of Corona, there's affordances that we've provided for them. The example is that if someone has the child's daycare closed down, they are given 80 hours in which they can receive two-thirds pay for their two weeks, and it does not count against their sick bank. And recognizing that our staff has done so much to keep our schools open, I am endorsing that Region 12 continue to participate and to support our employees during these times in which things are happening. Things are happening to families. People are getting sick. There are times in which we're having to force quarantines. And I'd like to be able to know that we're doing our best to take care of our people. As Greg said, the cost for us to date for just this, we call it EPSLA, but some do the Families First FF CRA, has cost this district $64,111. I firmly believe that has been an investment that has had people be committed, knowing that we're caring for them. I think there is an in-kind knowing that there are risks that come with being in front of a classroom. And I think the way that we continue to support our employees is to continue to provide this opportunity in the event that something happens. It is, if someone does request to be considered under EPSLA, they do have to get my approval. So we do work with everybody individually, find out what they qualify, what's happened. So it is not just this. Everybody has a two-week free pass. It is where, it is at two-thirds pay, so it's also not at full pay. So it's an option. I would like to continue with the board's support.
All right. I'm going to ask if there's a motion to approve. We're going to have discussion afterwards. But is there a motion to approve Region 12's voluntary continuation of the Families First Corona Response Act? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now let's have a discussion. I want to add something in here. You have to recognize the reason that we have been open and we first opened more than 112 days ago is because we are dedicated to having in-person school as long as we can do it. And this helps us get there. So I'll leave it at that. I'll love to entertain comments. Alex?
Yeah, did Megan say that there's some monies coming back from outside sources to help mitigate these expenses?
We were able to, and this is again Nicole Grant's handiwork, who figures out how to utilize our resources. But as far as the CARES Act and supports, she was able to consider how substitutes would be an impact, which did help with some of this. But what the federal government tried to incentivize people to utilize this program was a tax cut. Well, when you're tax-exempt, it really doesn't help you. So this is really our investment at this point forward because the CARES Act dollars did expire as far as putting in that grant on December 31st.
Do we have an idea what the cost will be for the next six, three months?
Well, I can tell you, I did not feel that this was abused during the fall. But I'd say I would anticipate that the $64,000 is probably inaccurate expectation. With the vaccine that's on the horizon, it's a hope. But I'm also not so rose-colored glasses to say that I think that the vaccine is the answer for the remainder of this year. So I would anticipate at least another $65,000.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, just a couple more details concerning this. So it's 80 hours, two-thirds pay for two weeks. That's a one-shot?
It's a one-time.
One time per person?
Correct.
Okay, and the $64,000 that's been expended, was that part of the $89,000 for the sub-costs?
Yes, I did factor that in. So when I looked at the sub-cost breakdown, I'm going to come back at it. It was the EPSLA cost, then I did, well, I did, Nicole figured out that subs beyond a typical year was approximately $12,000. And then we took the cost for what the teacher coverage is that we've paid out. We added that together so that way we were looking at what the true cost was.
Yeah, I'm all for this. This is definitely a worthy endeavor, and people need it. People need the comfort of knowing that they can attend to their family needs when the occasion occurs.
And these are our people.
Yes.
Completely.
Absolutely. And our people who are keeping our schools open, 100, I screwed up on the dates. We've actually opened 134 days ago, and it's been open every school day since then. Everyone on this board should be proud of our district. Yes, anyone else?
Just in addition, this is every staff member, union, non-union, regardless.
Correct. That said, and I do have to say, it also has to, we have to take out what our, like, union dues and their, you know, benefits and things that come out of that two-thirds amount. So there's still the cuts in, but again, this is our chance to try to keep them whole as much as possible.
Greg?
Yes.
I would just like to say that, you know, we do, we have to treat people like human beings. We have to be compassionate, and I think that our teachers will always, always thank us for doing this for them. So I will support it.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. I don't hear any more questions, so I guess we'll go on to a vote. All those in favor, Sue, can you please take a roll call?
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
John?
Hi.
Jim is absent. Alex?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Greg?
I am proud to vote yes, and I'm proud of my board.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Unanimously.
Unanimously.
Okay. Well, I think that's it for the regular agenda. We'll go into executive session. If someone would make a motion to discuss a matter with building and to discuss a matter of personnel.
I move that we go into executive session.
Alex moves we go in for those purposes. Is there a second?
Second.
Mary, seconded. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Does anyone abstain? It's unanimous. We needed a two-thirds vote. We have everybody. We're in executive session.